Good evening, let me call to order tonight's meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board. Excuse me. I just want to remind everybody to make sure that your microphones are turned on when you're speaking and to speak clearly into them. Also for any members of the public or anybody speaking before us today, please make sure that you identify yourselves for the record. The next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for January 4th, 2022 at seven o'clock in the Matthew Thornton Room. Next on the list, actually, sorry, Nelson, I'm going to appoint you a full member tonight in place of Ms. Lynn Christensen.
Thank you.
Next is the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Casey, what do you have for us?
All I have for you tonight is our Regional Impact Recommendation. Staff recommends that Kerners Car Care and the Merco Incorporated Site Plans are both not of regional impact.
Thank you, Casey. Do we hear a motion to that fact?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Mr. Disco, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Ms. Healy. All in favor of? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero for non-regional impact. Jamie, I'm using your first name tonight. I saw that look, yeah. I know, I know. Next on the docket. Item number three is Merrimack Parcel A LLC as the applicant and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merrimack Acquisition as the owners. This is continued consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan to add a phasing plan, allowing the development of the site to be completed in phases for purposes of occupancy permitting. The parcel is located at Ten Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District and Wellhead Protection Area. That's tax map three C lots one nine one dash O two and one nine one dash O two U one dash O two U four. Case Planning Board number twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, this item is continued from the December seventh, twenty twenty-one Planning Board Meeting. Casey, do you have anything to say on this before we go to the applicant?
Not much, I'll let the applicant make their presentation, I'll just quickly summarize that the applicant is looking to break this project up into sub-phases to allow each sub-phase to receive its certificate of occupancy separately.
Thank you, Casey. Sir, if you could please introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking for.
Dave Fenstermacher from VHB, I'm here tonight representing Merrimack Parcel A LLC.
Hold on, if you want to just hit it.
Oh, there, that sounds better.
Okay, if you could just reintroduce yourself one more time, please.
Uh, Dave Fenstermacher from VHB, I'm a civil engineer for the project, I'm here representing Merrimack Parcel A LLC. The Monahan's are in the audience tonight and Jay Leonard is also here with the team. As mentioned, you know, we've been in front of you before, this is an approved project for the mixed use, which includes the residential hotel and restaurant. Uh, the intent through our original approvals was to build the portions of the mixed use separately. First, the first phase being the residential and then the hotel with the roundabout and then the restaurant. On top of that, with the two hundred and forty units being built in three towers, the developer for the residential is looking to sub-phase their piece so that they can open up the clubhouse first for leasing, bringing folks in, uh, building the bottom garage, getting all the infrastructure in, um, you know, water sewer, electric, and then at that point, being able to phase from left to right the different towers, so that... The point being is that they're gonna have two hundred and forty units that people are excited to move into and they want to be able to move people in as it goes, and they have been working with the fire department and the building department on an MOA for that, for, to have those units open up separately. So when we were talking with the planning department, the, we wanted to work on a plan here that could be on record that then Tim and Robert could reference to, for the COs or those temporary COs for the buildings, so. We're not changing anything from what we've submitted before, it's really just formalizing what we spoke in front of the board before where the intent was to phase, and this is just the phase plan to document that phasing. So as I mentioned, the, you know, Phase A with it being the residential and the parking, the, as we stated on the plans, the intent would be per the shared parking analysis, that's part of the approval, we'd be having enough parking for each stage as it gets opened, and really, as part of that first phase, because it's the back corner, all the infrastructure is getting built for the entire, um, development and going to go to the residential and then in the future, as the hotel and the, um, restaurant come on, we're just gonna be building the laterals into those buildings, and we're gonna be building the full stormwater detention for the entire site. Again, that's gonna be all put into place first and then when we come in to put the other buildings in, everything's already in place, so this is really just for the order of the COs to be, um, established.
Okay, that seems, um, pretty straightforward, board members. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I do.
Mr. Disco, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, you didn't mention Phase Two at all, and that is the, uh, commercial portion of this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no more residential in that area, or is there?
Well, we, we actually went in front of the zoning board to look at the potential to, based on, I'm sure you guys are all aware of the market now, where we wanted to do office and retail. And Mr. Monahan could probably get into, uh, not a lot of need or want for those uses, so we're gonna be moving forward with more residential. So we went with, to the zoning board to get the initial approval for the mixed use, for the use of the, to add the additional units, but we will be back in front of you folks when it finally gets decided if we're gonna be residential, because we would need to get an amendment to the conditional use permit and we would also have to get a site plan amendment for that Phase Two. So right now, we're just showing it as future, um, the approved conditional use permit has it as office and retail, but at this point, we're, we also have approval from the zoning board to, um, for the additional residential units.
Yeah, but that's not the final approval, it's gotta come here.
No, I know, and then that's what I said, and then the next steps would be conditional, uh, amendment to the conditional use permit for you folks and then site plan. So there's, there's still, still two steps if we move forward with the residential to, to come back in here.
Okay, there's gotta be some good argument for that, okay? Just FYI. The other thing, uh, what's the, uh, what kind of timing are we looking at these Phase One A, uh, well, within One A, there is two and three and four and five.
Yeah, so the two, so the, when I say One A two, it's building that entire foundation, because it's, the first floor is a parking deck, so they're gonna build that and then the phases will go on, um. I'm not sure, do you guys remember if the LaSessi told us which, but basically, they're, it's not over a long period of time, it's, they finish a unit, it goes on for a temporary CO while they continue building, so they're, they're gonna get a CO for the entire building, they're just getting unit approvals as, for occupancy as they get built.
So you're looking for approval of an individual unit in an unfinished building, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, well, Jay.
Sir, if you could just step to the microphone and introduce yourself as well, please.
Yes, my name is, uh, can you hear me all right?
You want to just hit the button right in front of you?
Green light.
You're green on.
I'm on?
Yeah.
My name is Thomas Leonard, uh, and I'm a lawyer here in, in, well, in Nashua, representing the, uh, the owner in this matter. So, and, and I would certainly confirm everything that David has said, the only other thing I'd, I'd point out is that the, the picture you're looking at now, the plan you're looking at now is three owners. One is the residential component, uh, and then the Monahan's own the hotel component and the restaurant component, and they also own the vacant component. Now, the question on the...
That's two owners.
That's two owners, but, yeah, it's two owners.
Three units.
Three separate units.
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to confuse things with the words unit, because it's, it's like a lot, but it's not.
It's like a condo.
It is a condominium, but it's for purposes of financing and, and, uh, development as opposed to separate, um, residential units. So your, your question, uh, Mr. Nelson, is, I'm sorry, Mr. Disco, is, um, regards to residential building, the, the building that's presently under construction. It is in the, the U shape, and they call them three separate, they, they refer to it as towers, they're four stories?
Yeah.
So they get built in, in steps, and the developer, LaSessi, has spoken with the building department to arrange for occupancy in three steps, each, you know, one at a time, each, uh, for lack of a better word, tower. So the planning staff wants to make sure that they can issue certificates of occupancy in the way that the builder expects to deliver these towers. So it isn't, it isn't an apartment that is getting a temporary, uh, CO, it's a kind of a wing of the building, if you will, and they are separated by, in accordance with all of building codes and all the building departments have, uh, reviewed the same thing, and what, what we're doing here today in sub-phasing this is really just coordinating the planning staff with the building staff in a lot of ways.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, so it is not a separate living unit, it's a separate wing.
Okay, you're looking to have a complete living unit, as you're calling them, of which there are three, I see.
No, there are two hundred and twenty-four.
Within three towers.
Within three towers, so each is about seventy, whatever that is, seventy-four or five?
Yeah.
So you're looking for each individual apartment?
No, each, each wing of seventy-four or five will get occupied at the same time and will have an occupancy permit for that wing.
So when you look at, try to, you can see here, you can see this outline here, that's the first tower, it has, you know, the firewalls, it's a standalone meeting the fire code, uh, tower or building, but when you look, at the end of the day, it's, it's just a big U-shaped building, but it's, because it's that U, it's built in three phases. So, you know, they'll have eight, we'll say seventy-five or eighty, and here get built, the fire department, building department will sign off on it, and then they'll work their way around the building. So it's the, the sub-phases to this overall big U-shaped building.
But you won't be occupying individual apartments, if I can use that word, in each, in that particular phase. It won't get a CO until that whole building, that whole wing.
That whole wing, yes.
Is what gets the...
Because that's, that's, that's what the agreement is with the fire department and the building department is. Once that wing is done and it has all the standalone, uh, meets all the standalone requirements for fire safety and things like that, then they can occupy that seventy-four units, plus or minus seventy-four, but, you know, around there, or eighty, and then they'll do the same thing with the one four, with the bottom unit, and then, so after a series of time, you're basically just moving in eighty people at a time.
Yeah. Okay, I wanted to understand that it wasn't completely clear.
Yeah.
To me, and I assume there's safety exits and so on, if fire departments looked at it so that...
Every, yep.
They're not concerned that somebody's living in a building that's not finished.
Exactly, and that's...
So what actually happened was the, the builder spoke with the building department and worked all this out and they, they agreed on uh, kind of the steps of occupancy, but the planning staff didn't feel like they had a
Right.
Permission to
Yeah.
Grant a sub, uh, sub-CEO, if you will.
Yes.
And so that's why we're here, just to make sure the planning staff is consistent with the building and it's consistent with your, uh, understandings.
Okay, so when the first building gets occupied, which is the building on the left, together, what else is part of that phasing? You said the clubhouse?
Well, they'll do, the, the first phase is to build the road in, build all the parking lot, and then the clubhouse will be in there.
Yeah.
And then they'll build the, the foundation of the U, so when you're out there, everything's, the parking lot, everything's gonna be done, and then they'll work their way on top of the, that U-shaped foundation that's already in there. And the clubhouse, they want to open first, because that's where they have folks come in to do their leasing and show, show the units and things like that. So that would be, that would be, the clubhouse would be operational, uh, as an off, like a leasing office while they're completing the, the U shape.
Okay, until it'll be open then, and it'll be that way until all three of those legs?
And then it'll be the amenity, the out, the outdoor amenity spaces will be open, uh, but the clubhouse, I think at that point, would switch from the leasing office to the amenities for the residents.
Yeah, what's the other amenities, the restaurant, or?
No, in, in the clubhouse, I don't, I'm not sure what they have in there, but just the, if there's a gym or something, the, the stuff they have from people.
There's a pool, too, right?
There's a pool.
Okay, I think that clarifies my questions, um...
I know we're using a lot of terminology, I think that was a little confusing, but at the end of the day, it's the, it's building the towers.
From the picture that was handed out, just by itself.
Well, and, and one of the things, if I may say, one of the things that's a little confusing is every time we use the word unit and condominium, people think they're for sale. These are, these are rental apartments, so
Yeah.
The, the condominium is not a typical condominium, it's really for financing and separating ownership.
And then some people call units the actual apartment, singular apartment, so it's, uh...
Yeah, okay.
We're looking to occupy residential towers one at a time.
And Mr. Fenstermacher, just to clear something up, you said, you keep referencing the foundations, those buildings, two of the three are already up. Correct? Like, there's windows in one of them.
Yeah.
So, okay, just to clear that up.
Yeah.
Ms. Healy, please, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I have several questions.
Absolutely, fire away.
So, question for you, when you start occupancy in One A two and One A three, are they, will, are, will those people be in a construction zone because you will not have built the clubhouse yet?
No, the clubhouse will be built.
It will be built by then, so that would, there will be no traffic impedance there?
Correct.
Or anything to block their entrance or exits.
Yeah.
And Casey, has a traffic study already been done on this?
Part of the original approval.
Yeah. Well, the plan has changed, if you will forgive me saying so. This is not the plan that was originally came to the planning board, even though it was before my time. So I'm going to give you fair warning that when we get to One B, One C, and then Phase Two, I'm gonna wanna see a complete traffic study, a full traffic study, to know how all of that affects the traffic, because you're already in a high-traffic zone, especially at Christmas, when the outlets are doing a lot of business. So just
Right.
Fair, you know, that, that's coming.
So I mean, as, when we came in for the, the amendments, the site plan amendment, the conditional use amendment, the, the uses, we, we actually had the traffic study completed for the full use, and then we actually had a, um, a memo that showed the trick, the traffic generation for the new layout, which actually demonstrated a reduction in the parking from the approved plans.
I'm sure, because you no longer have the commercial component in there. But when you put the hotel in...
Well, that was part of the original.
And then the residential, and then Phase Two is supposed to be mixed, commercial and...
But that's what, our, our traffic study was for the full build.
Commercial or residential?
No, for a commercial office, the, the original approved plan, which was office, retail, residential, hotel, and restaurant, the tra, we have a traffic study for that that was complete, that was approved, and we're showing, this piece has less, so we have, we demonstrated there was enough capacity and that we could handle the traffic, and this is less than what was approved.
Okay, and the traffic circle was part of that plan?
Correct.
Yeah. We're not fond of them here in Merrimack. Anyways, also, question for you, um, over at the Premium Outlets Boulevard end of it, are you planning for a pedestrian crosswalk across that area with light control? Because you're right across the street from an industrial office area with a couple of big companies there, and if they're renting any of those units, they're gonna want their people to be able to walk across the street.
Well, working through this for the original approval, we were providing a walkway to the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe there was a receiving, I don't think so. So, pedestrian system on the other side, at that time, at the time of the approval, when we did the traffic study and all this, it was not contemplated to add.
Okay, might want to think about it. Only because people will not be able to cross that street.
Right, and it, that is the, the DOT as well, so that's...
Good luck with that. Okay, and my last question is, no, I, I already said, the roundabout, not crazy with that idea. Okay, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, I can't say I agree with the roundabouts, but I do like the roundabouts. Shows you who knows how to drive and who doesn't, by the way. Board members, any other questions?
All said.
Nelson, you're all set? I'm gonna hold off commenting on Phase Two, but I'm gonna echo Nelson's, um, comments
Yeah.
About what you're gonna be coming to us, because I have heard what you're gonna look for, but we're gonna need to see some solid, you know, reasoning for that, because it is a mixed-use permit, so.
Yeah.
There being no other questions, do I hear, uh, do we hear a motion?
Do we have a, are we going to, uh...
A public, um...
You want to accept, accept the plan for...
There's no, there's no need to accept for completeness, but we do need to open up for public hearing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought you were saying. You want a motion to open for public discussion?
Yeah, I forgot public discussion, we can, we can do that now, though. Given that I forgot about it, I'll now open up the, uh, board for public discussion. Anybody who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and tell us what you have for us. And the time? Oh, as to when we open it, yes, the public hearing was open at seven twenty-one.
Good evening, my name is Michael Mills, I've been a resident here in the town of Merrimack, one, on almost forty years. Live at Seven Arbor Street in Merrimack, right down the street from the site. I'm totally confused. I am totally confused. I sat out here in the back and listened to one of the gentlemen talk about two hundred and forty units. I think we all heard that, two hundred and forty units. It's two hundred and twenty-four units, not two hundred and forty. We heard about the access, this is gonna be fantastic, we're going to, um, build the left tower building first, while the construction's going on for the bottom section and the right section of the plan. That doesn't sound like a bad idea, except that access that was required by the fire department has to come through that parking lot to get to the tail end of the first tower. If you were to go out there now, you can't reach that, because number one, there's a fence around it, I assume they take the fence down, you know, if they were trying to rent out the apartments, but you have all your construction work out there, you have all the construction trucks that are out there parked. You have all the prefab, uh, framing that is out there to the right of the rightmost building. There has to be some discussion going on about what happens to a fire truck access, there is none, and there won't be until the entire property is built. I've been in construction, I've built apartments, I've built condominiums, this is ridiculous. My second concern is that I have been in touch with the head of the planning board, and I was very specific, I wanted a copy of everything that was going to be discussed at this evening's meeting pertaining to this particular project. It wasn't till six fifteen tonight that I decided, hey, I better go back online and make sure that I have all the right information of what's being discussed tonight. At six fifteen tonight was the first time that I saw that there was a Phase One A, One B, and One C. The planning board failed to provide that information to me when I requested it time after time. Time after time, I said, I want a copy of everything that's going to be discussed here this evening, they never provided it to me. It was never provided to any of the abutters. The abutters have a right to know what is taking place on that site, that's the purpose of an abutter notice, very simple. I sat here and heard how about this, how this is a four-story building. Every neighbor adjacent to this project understood it to be a four-story building. It's not, it's a five-story building. Now, I don't, I don't want to be a smart butt sitting here, but I can count one, two, three, four, five. If there's five floors, it's a five-story building. And yet this evening, the people representing this project came in and very clearly said, it's a four-story apartment building, it's a four-story building. They didn't say apartment building, said it's a four-story building, it is not, it is a five-story building. Since this project started, well, one other thing, I just want to backseat up here a moment, going back to two hundred and twenty-four, two hundred and forty, uh, units, I brought up to the zoning board, and I'd like to publicly notify the planning board, so that there's no discussion about this in the future. The notice that went out to the, to the abutters pertaining to the additional units to be built on this site was grossly incorrect. I pointed out and I documented to the zoning board that they had the wrong owners of the property, they had the wrong petitioner, and they had the wrong location. And I will publicly say that the zoning, that the zoning board's reference, talking to, uh, Tim, was, "Daw, so what?" I brought this to the attention of the town manager, who agreed with my statements, that the notice was incorrect. So when it comes before this board, please remember that, please take a look yourself, look to see what was given to the zoning board and if that information was correct, you will agree to me that it was wrong. We're talking about parking, we're talking about getting, getting permits, uh, occupancy permits for the first tower. How many parking spots are they going to have to provide for that? I haven't heard that mentioned at all. I haven't heard it mentioned how much, if Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, how many parking spots for each of these phases? Where are the parking spots going to be located? Are they all underneath the building? You heard this gentleman talk about that they're going to pour the concrete for the phases, for Phase Two and Three, when, when the building's already under construction, they don't know what they're talking about. My recommendation to this board on this motion, this, this, what's before here, is to continue this and get some correct information. As, as, as Mr. McLaughlin pointed out, those two buildings are already under construction. How many parking spots? I get a kick out of this, this thing that I, I saw at six fifteen tonight, it talks about shared parking. Shared parking with who? Shared parking with who? When this plan was originally brought before the town, back in two thousand seventeen, I believe it was, two thousand sixteen, uh, January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen is when it was approved by this board, there was the talk of stores going in there, there was the talk of the hotel going in there, there was a talk about the restaurant going in there. In this planning board, if you go back to the minutes of that meeting, it was very clear that there would be no occupancy permits granted for the apartments until the hotel and the restaurant was built. I believe it was Mr. Disco that, that was very strong on that. This was not to be a, an apartment development, it was supposed to be a conditional use permit that was granted for different uses. Now we're sitting here saying, well, when, when's the hotel gonna go up? Hasn't been started? When's the restaurant going up? Hasn't been started? Nothing's been started about, except for the residential portion, and the only things that come before this planning board is to add additional u, residential units. So are we going to have a, an apartment, is this now an apartment complex that, that's gonna take up the whole project? Are we going to be back in here another six months or a year, saying, no, we don't want two twenty-four, we don't want two forty? Phase Two over there, we want to build an apartment building. This planning board has to say, no, that's not what was originally approved, and that is not what the original intent of this project was. At that meeting, and I've tried to attend as many of these meetings as I can, and when I didn't attend them, I still only watched them on television, the purpose for the hotel and the restaurant was to help set off some of the costs that the town was going to incur as a result of the apartments being approved. It's in the minutes, please, don't take my word for it, take a look at it. They may never be built. How do we, how do we make sure that, that a hotel and, and, and restaurant do get built? How do we do that? There's a couple of ways, we can say, okay, there's gonna be a penalty, if you will, to the, to the developer of the apartment complex that says, okay, you're... complex that says, okay, you're gonna have to pay us X number of dollars every, in perpetuity until the hotel and the restaurant are built? I don't know. I mean, there's lots of ways of doing that, but blindly, absolutely blindly, listening to false information that's being provided here does not make any sense. There was no discussion about Phase Two. You're gonna have cars going into two hundred and twenty-four apartments. Most people, most families have at least one or two cars, but you're talking three, four hundred cars going in there. We're not gonna build the roundabout until the hotel and the restaurant get built? If they never get built, how do these people get into their apartment building? Christmas time, as was mentioned by one of the members of the planning board, you have perpetual traffic coming from the outlet center out to, to, to the road. How do you get, in the morning, coming home at five o'clock at night, how do you get two or three hundred cars to get into the apartment when there's no additional lane for the cars to go around those people trying to turn into the apartment complex? An extra lane was brought up and it was turned down by the planning board. Planning board said, no, we don't need another lane. We're gonna do a turnaround. We're gonna do a roundabout. Now, the roundabout may never get built. Please look at what's being suggested here. I have a couple of requests. I have a request that when a notice goes out to an abutter or anyone on the list that the town provides notices to at the residence request, that all this information be provided, that it not be held back from the abutters or from other residents in the town. I shouldn't have to come here forty-five minutes before the meeting and find out that the information I've been provided by the planning board has been grossly incorrect. I wish the chairman of the planning board was, not the chairman, but, uh, whatever his name is here. I have it over here. I wish he was here cuz I'd ask him exactly why didn't he provide that information? Why didn't he provide that information to a town resident? And secondly, I ask you to please take a look at the site. You can't get to where the fire department wanted it to be on the left side of, of the first tower. You can't get there because there's construction debris throughout there. And I don't wanna be, I don't want somebody to be in that building up on the fourth, the fifth floor, whatever you wanna call it. It's a four-story building with apartments on the fifth floor with the building burning and the fire truck not being able to get up there. I think that's gonna put this down in a very serious, very serious position. And again, there has to be some discussion, some assurance that Phase Two is gonna be built for the hotel and the restaurant, and my God, the roundabout cannot be part of the final phase. It just can't possibly be. I appreciate bringing up my points. Thank you for listening to me, and I wish everybody Merry Christmas. May I add one final thing? I don't think there should be a meeting before Christmas. Just personally. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'm sure we can agree with that last sentiment, me personally. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Ma'am, please. State your name, address, and tell us what you have for us, please.
My name is Beth Burns. I live at Five Spruce Street. First off, um, with Phase Two, is it going to be an apartment, or are we proposing a few things behind there? I wanna just make sure I'm understanding what we talked about months ago or years ago and what's on the table now.
Um, just to give you a short answer, in front of this board is what we approved. What they have in front of the zoning board and what, well, I'm hearing they will eventually bring in front of us. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I've made my sentiments known. Mr. Disco has made his sentiments known as well, but um, it's hard to have a discussion on that when we have yet to get to that bridge.
Okay, so right now, we don't know what Phase Two will be?
We do, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, and it will be?
It's commercial retail, and Casey, what was, um, office space?
Office.
Yeah, and the residential.
And a little bit of residential. That's the way we set it up beforehand.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that's a little bit of a...
And what size of residential in Phase Two?
I don't have that in front of me right now, ma'am.
Okay. And like my, like, I, I understand. Personally, I'm never going to find it attractive. I didn't buy my house on, I'm not gonna lie. I didn't buy my house on Spruce Street because I, I couldn't wait for a hotel and restaurant apartment buildings to be behind me. I respect my home. I put a lot of money and time into my house. I've raised two kids in it. You know, I appreciate the woods behind my house. That's why I bought it, you know. I wasn't, if I wanted a city life, I would've moved to Boston or New York, you know. I'm not gonna lie about that. And at the same time, I'm trying to be respectful about business people. You own the property. It is your right to try and sell it and put what you wish to go there. I understand that. So I, I try to see both sides of the coin. I honestly do. The only thing I ask, and I think it's very minimal to ask for, and anybody in this room that doesn't live in my neighborhood, that respects their house and their family, their spouses, their kids, the time and money they put into their home, you cannot tell me, in the name of God, you would be happy having all this behind your house. You can't. Nobody can if you respect your home. So all I ask for in saying that is that, just breathe. Let's just slow down a little bit. Take into account what space, you know, that we have over there. You're asking for these apartment buildings, a restaurant, a hotel, another commercial area, another apartment building. It's not as big as it looks over there anymore once the buildings take the space. Once those buildings have all been built and you start to do the math on the occupancy, the number of people that can, you know, the number of tables at the restaurant, the number of rooms at the hotel, the number of apartment buildings, multiply that by the number of people, you know. Typically, it is two cars per apartment, unless it's a single apartment home, but typically, it's two cars. I don't know how we're gonna have enough parking space over there with the, the way it's designed. I really don't. I, I think it's gonna become a major issue over there. I think between that, the traffic with the outlets, the, you know, especially around this time of year and all. You know, we have to really, I just want it to be built in a fashion where let's be realistic on what space we have to work with, you know what I mean? So we don't have fire issues and the firemen can't get in there. Where there, if there's any kind of other safety issues, nobody can fit in. There's no place to park. People are parking on the sides of the road, you know, on Industrial Drive or something, you know. I, I'm just, that's all I'm asking for on that and traffic-wise, to really think about how are we going to really balance this out with the occupancy and the number, and the traffic? And the emergency exit, is that in a, now, this has been talked about more than once, and I brought it up myself more than once because, and not because, I'm just trying to be respectful of our neighborhood. That's the only reason. That's all I'm asking for on it. And is it in written agreement that no matter what goes behind their Phase, you know, Phase One, Phase C, no matter what, the emergency exit is not to be touched and the abutter remains as is? Is that in writing?
Can you, can you repeat that, ma'am?
Is that still in writing that that emergency exit remains as is and our, and that our buffer is not touched?
The fire lane, correct?
Yep.
Behind Phase Two?
And that buffer behind it is not touched under any circumstance, even with Phase Two?
Yes, ma'am.
Still being proposed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's in writing, cuz that's something that's important to me, and I think that's extremely little to ask for, for our homes on Spruce Street. I really do. The other thing I wanted to mention, um, is with the height of these buildings, if there were a fire or other things that could be happening, have we taken into account the safety issues, though, still with, with the neighboring areas? Have we seriously taken into account how close our neighborhood is to this area?
Um, that would be something that the fire chief would've gone, and just speaking personally, I know when they go through their review, both fire and the police department, they take what they look at very seriously. We usually get theirs last because they take a very long time to go through it and make sure they do have the equipment, space, and time and manpower to, uh, provide a safe environment.
And they'll have space to get right in there with all the occupancy living at the apartment and the restaurant and the hotel? The fire trucks will have plenty of room to get right in there and take care of the fires?
If they feel they do not, then an occupancy permit will not be issued. So as long as an occupancy permit would be issued, there would be enough space, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what I'm, one, just what I'm asking, too, is that I understand from a business perspective, especially with the pandemic and, you know, places that, restaurants that closed for temporarily, and everybody's in a big rush to start making money again. I understand that from a business perspective, but maturely, I think it's, to me, I would just rather seriously, rather be the kind of person that thinks about things. Let's be realistic, from a business, and personally. You know, put yourself in the people's shoes that live in this neighborhood. Let's seriously be business people, but let's be residents at the same time, and let's plan this out properly. Let's plan this out maturely. Let's plan this out realistically with what space we have and the, and the population in this town, and the school buses and the kids, and the more kids that are probably gonna end up in these apartments, and the more school buses, and I, I'm just asking to, to just put careful thought and time into how we plan this out and what we accept in this. That's honestly all I'm asking for. I'm not saying you can't build any. It's not my say. I understand that. I just don't want everything to be done so quickly that we're not taking into account the reality of what we really have to think about and what really needs to be addressed. That's honestly all I'm asking for. Okay, and I'd, I'd really appreciate if the town and the business people involved would, would respect that. That's honestly all I ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public session at seven forty-one. Uh, the applicant, please step back to the microphone and address some of these questions.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer a couple of them. I'm sure David can, uh, give additional information. My name is Thomas Leonard, again, for the record. So I appreciate the, the comments, uh, from, from the abutters and from the people in the neighborhood, but uh, this is really just about that phasing. But, um, I, I think to kind of, uh, clarify a couple things, perhaps for the public and for the people here today. Uh, let me first off say that this plan has been reviewed thoroughly, as I know this board knows. Several times in front of the board, then in front of all of the, all of the departments. With particular, with, with reference to this particular building, it has been reviewed very, very carefully by all safety departments, especially the fire department, and all of those issues are, you know, significant issues, and they have been addressed. Now, Mr. Monahan is not the builder of that building, so he, you know, he's actually the owner of the other unbuilt sections of this property, but the owners of the building have a memorandum of, of understanding on the detail of, of all of those questions that have been raised. I think the other thing that I'd like to say, or another thing, is that in the process, while it might not be clear today, this is a fiscally positive project. The apartments alone are, but the whole site, as, as we show it right now, the apartments, the hotel and the restaurant are substantially, uh, fiscally positive, and this will be, uh, all built. The purpose of this plan, as you see it, is to have steps of occupancy through this whole first phase, but it is one phase, and it will all be built, and in fact, there was a question about the hotel, just for this board's information. The site has been under construction, as you know, for a while. Very substantially, uh, there's, all the infrastructure's in, all the drainage is in for the entire site, all the, um, the utilities are in the works or, or completed. So basically, the hotel is really ready to start construction, vertical construction. The, the rest of it has been accomplished. The plan is to build the hotel this spring. Now, things happen, but that's the present plan. So this will be completed as a mixed-use site, as the board, uh, had, had requested. With regard to parking, Dave Finstermarker and his, and his office have gone through this carefully, and part of what we're showing you today, and I think you'll see in the notes, and we didn't, we didn't go through all the detail because we didn't really know how much you wanted to hear tonight. Um, but I think you can look at the plan and you can see that there is a number count for each phase and for each sub-phase. We far exceed any of the requirements for the town. There's plenty of parking. In fact, the whole site is gonna be finished, ready for parking before the, the other uses are in demand. So there's plenty of parking. The notes carefully take you through that. And the only other thing I, I feel like I have to say is, there was comment about the notices, um, at, at the different hearings. We, of course, have a very different point of view on that. There was extensive discussion on that at the zoning board. Um, we went through it with the staff. Everybody, at least from my standpoint, everybody agreed that the notice was sufficient at all of these occasions. Um, we certainly wanna have good notice. There's no incentive for us to have, uh, a lousy notice, if you will. So, uh, we certainly appreciate the comment. I understand everybody, uh, wants to hear about it, but we, you know, we think it's been pretty straightforward, uh, the whole time. The difficulty here today is, we aren't here ready to talk to you about Phase Two. I, I understand that people have some questions. We will certainly address those questions as we go forward through the next phases, and we, we know we have to. With regard to the roundabout, it is proposed as a part of the construction of this site to be completed with the hotel, so, before the restaurant, after the apartments, and it is two hundred and twenty-four units. I don't know if I said two forty. If I did, it was a fumble, uh, and I apologize, but it's...
Could've been too much Christmas on my brain, but, um, it didn't, was no intent to misrepresent. It was just, uh...
No, and then the only other thing I would say is, a, a, as the chair has mentioned, this site is under construction. It is being carefully monitored by all the departments in town, um, and it's just under construction, so it's not gonna be the finished site, and it's gonna look like it's under construction. Um, it's a, it's a pretty big project and, uh, it's, you know, there's some real experts working it, including the town departments. So we certainly know and think that this is, uh, there's safe access continuously, um, and that's a high priority from the town standpoint and from the, the builder's standpoint. So if you have questions, we certainly would try to answer them, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you for, uh, touching on some of those, Mr. Leonard. Yeah, Mr. Disco, as I go through these, if you wanna go ahead and ask a question?
Oh, okay. I just had a couple of questions, and perhaps Mr. Leonard could answer them. He did try. He mentioned the, one of my questions was the number of units, dwelling units that are in this.
Two twenty-four.
Two twenty-four is the correct number?
That's the correct number.
That's the number that was in the original approval?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Yeah. So there's been no change?
No.
And I don't know where the other number came from, but
I don't either.
That doesn't matter?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was me trying to read off the...
Pardon?
It was me trying to read off the screen and...
Oh, okay.
Not good.
The other question was, the height of the building has been discussed here, whether it's four stories or five stories?
Yeah, so that, again, I shouldn't, should've clarified. It's four stories of apartment. It's on a podium, parking podium, so...
Okay, that open grill, open steelwork that you see then is not one of the stories?
Right, and that, again, that is part of the, we didn't change the building from the approved plans since we've been in here. That is the, the height of the building. It's the four stories on top of a parking deck.
That concept was in, I knew, I knew it was a below, I thought it was a below ground.
It's like a partially and above, yeah.
Partially above, okay. Okay, thank you. I wanted those things clarified.
Or maybe it's all above now, yeah. Uh, Casey, just a question from me. The fire department and all relative departments have gone through the way they have these phases laid out?
Yes, and just as you said, uh, the fire department's one of the signatures that signs the CO, so they, they wouldn't sign off unless they were okay.
I just wanted to, to touch on that again. These departments that, uh, go over this take these very seriously. Uh, they don't just rubber stamp it. I mean, neither do we, but, um, these are very heavy decisions, especially when it comes to, uh, certificates of occupancy, so...
Right, and we actually didn't have the conversation with staff until the conversations with the fire department were held.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Healy.
So, and Casey, maybe you can answer this. The fire department is aware that this is four stories on top of the parking to equal five and that ladder one can reach that? I know I've seen ladder one fully extended, and I think it's pretty close.
Uh, yes, I do know that this project was reviewed by the fire marshal.
Okay.
Yep.
As long as I understand that it's five stories. Cuz that will be much too late if we're looking for a certificate of occupancy... A certificate of occupancy and they find out that ladder one will not reach the fifth floor. Um, also, uh. Where are you, when you open. Your first two buildings or phase. I'm sorry, I've lost my math. Anyways, uh, yeah, Phase One, A, Two, and Three. That equals. Four hundred and forty-eight cars. If they're in fact rented by. A young couple with two cars. Where are you gonna put them all? Not gonna fit under the buildings.
Well, we have, I mean, we used the standard, we used the town requirements and then we also had a. Parking um equation that we was approved as part of the conditional use permit and followed through the site plans. We have four hundred fifty-eight. For two twenty-four. So not all have two cars, some, and these are, you know, some will have one car, some will have two, so. We, if you do the math there, the four fifty-eight is more than two cars per. Unit.
Were you getting four fifty-eight?
Oh, that's the number that we have built, that we're building now.
Okay.
The requirement, uh, the approved requirement for the building was three seventy and we're building the four fifty-eight now.
Okay.
Also, Ms. Healy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I did have one question, just curious. Why are you putting the roundabout in Phase One B? That's just a curiosity of mine. Is there a reasoning behind that or?
I think it's. So there has been a lot of discussion about that, and if you wanna, I I probably shouldn't even say this because our plan is to build the roundabout. But it's not necessary for this first phase. There's an argument that it's not necessary for the hotel, but Mr. Monahan decided that it's important. To the hotel and to the uh apartment, so that that's the appropriate time.
Tom Monahan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Monahan. I I can hear you, yes, but the people at home and just for a minute, say, could you?
Just very briefly, um, first of all, all this was done under my watch as 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 the owner. And um. I I just wanna say that this plan, the 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 po- the four floors on top of the podium podium uh was completely vetted by the. Town, approved by this planning board as as you see it up there. The roundabout has always been a topic of discussion, and as a matter of fact, the roundabout. Wa- wa- was was a big topic of the discussion when we had that much larger plan. But but now that the the plan has has gotten less dense. With respect to the uses and and that the the traffic. The the roundabout, to some people, really, uh, it it doesn't. To your point, that it really doesn't, isn't a requirement. But I gotta tell you, I I I I think from my point of view, I, it's a safety, safety uh thing and and so I'm. I'm the guy that's saying, you know, I really think we need it. I was up there Friday at uh, at uh Black Friday and, you know. I I would get concerned. I I truly would, and so. Uh, that, but the roundabout has always been a a topic of discussion by this board and. You know, all the numbers and the statisticians say it's not required, but, you know, from. From. My feeling that I think it's for the safety and really. The 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 residents that are the the occupants or whomever they are, that wanna leave our site and take the left up to the outlets. Is what concerned me the most, and so I said if we were doing that without a roundabout. It 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 doesn't make a whole lot of sense, to me. It makes a lot of sense in paper, but not to me.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Board members, any other questions for the applicant?
I think there was another question from Mr. Michelson.
Uh, Mr. Michelson, yeah, you can. Uh, the public session is over, but if you have one question, you can.
Well, I I have just uh.
If you just want.
To make if I may.
I'm sorry, if you just wanna step to the microphone.
Is this on? I guess it is. I have just two points to make uh in the presentation that followed the uh. Open discussion. Part of the parking lot is not underground. It is all above ground. Again, another misstatement of what's being said. And keep in mind, I just wanna stress to the planning board, keep in mind that they've admitted that the construction of the apartments. Is going to cost the town money. The break-even point and the reward to the town for allowing this is when the hotel. And the restaurant get built. There is no assurance before this board that the hotel and the restaurant will ever be built. Which means that the granting of this. Project by the board is going to cost all of us money. I don't wanna pay anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Fenstermacher, I know you're. Doing a calculation, but if you wanna step forward. Please. If you have any response to that.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that you were.
I'm trying to figure, I'm just trying to check the thing, um. Again, I apologize if I. I don't think I said it was underground. I said it was. Did I say partially? I meant partially enclosed, partially open.
These were the, no, I can. I can say that those were part of the original approval. I'm sure all board members know that that is not underground, but underneath the buildings themselves. And the rest of the parking is out in the lot. Uh, the terminology may have gotten lost, but that is what it's been approved for the whole time.
Having a tough terminology night, I guess.
Nope, that's fine. Casey. I have one last question for you. The um, the calculation for the uh. Tax positive of this plan, do you have that in front of you in any way?
Uh, no, that is not information I have with me up here. That would be in the previous project file.
Right, I was, yeah, I was trying to find my, if I had it on my phone where we had the fiscal report, cause we looked at it as. A whole, um, so I wasn't sure if we had the individual ones, but, you know. I don't know if, Tom, you wanna talk about the timing of the hotel?
Yeah. Firstly, again, Tom Monahan, um. Again, uh, the phase, Phase One, Two, the building, the 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 full apartment building. Uh, is is uh expected to be completed um. In uh, A- A- April of uh, twenty twenty-three. At that same time, my plan is to open up the Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites at the very same time. And um, we, we're uh, a springtime uh start. And and at the, at that very same time, when the, when the uh hotel is completed, the roundabout will be completed as well. We're just, we're just in the process right now. We're, we've, we've got the franchise, uh, you know, Marriott as well, as we are very excited to go forward. But there is a little something going on in this world right now that um, I thank the good Lord I didn't start in two thousand nineteen. But um, you know, that the 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 plan is to to uh bring the hotel out at the very same time as the apartments are done. Along with the roundabout and uh, you know, until, until further notice, that's still the plan. We're, we're working diligently, uh, there's, there's financing that's in place, subject to subject. And uh, you're subject to subject meaning COVID. But uh, yeah, we, we, that's the plan and and frankly, the reason why. The restaurant, um, um, we haven't even started marketing it because. Being a capitalist, I think once the apartment and the hotels are in, it's just more of a quality restaurant that would be fitting to that area. And so that's uh, in in discussions with Fidelity and other surrounding, you know, we wanna, we wanna put the right place there. So we've been reluctant, frankly, haven't even marketed it yet. We've had a lot of interest, but we haven't marketed it because it's just. If I did it now, I could make a, I could do it anytime, I could make a mistake, but trying to, as. Ms. Burns said, try to go at it a little bit. Patiently, if you will.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Mr. Disco?
Yeah, I would just say what we're asked to do tonight here is really just break up Phase One. We've already phased this project. We've already allowed it to be phased. Without specific timeframes.
Correct.
Because of the economy and the whole works, and that what we're asked here tonight to do is break Phase One into sub-phases. And uh, I think it's consistent with our thinking all along and allowing this to be built as the market allows, so. I have no problem going forward with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Disco, thank you. Board members, anything, anything else to add? Not seeing anything, just uh. Just a little part from me, uh. Not to say that I love apartments going up over town, but uh, to my understanding. That the apartments are usually the tax. Benefits to the town, not um. Not just financially wise, but. Water-wise, utilities-wise, everything, because MVD has an issue not because of water usage, but because of irrigation and. Obviously. Seventy-five. Two hundred twenty-four people living in one large building are not gonna water two hundred twenty-four separate lawns, so. That's just my little input. Given that, do I hear a motion?
Okay, if you'd like, Mr. Motion, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to uh, to approve the request. As presented for the phasing as presented. In breaking Phase One into. Four or five, whatever it is, subparts.
Does that include the uh conditions that he put in the memo? There are conditions on page two.
I think there, uh, I think I had no problem with those, the complete. Uh, let me see. Yes, uh, in- including the uh, the conditions that were placed in the memo of uh, Robert Price of December sixteenth. Which has to do with uh, all the general and subsequent conditions placed on the original site plan. And conditional approval. And subsequently amended shall continue to be in place with this amended site plan approved as applicable. That's my motion.
Casey, did you get all that? Just subsequent to the conditions in the memo.
Yeah, it's subject to the conditions in the memo, Casey, of December sixteenth.
Thank you, I did get that.
Yeah.
Good. Motion made by Mr. Disco. Do I hear a second on the motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Dano. And just to remember to the board before we vote, this is just for phasing of Phase One. This does not have anything to do with Phase Two. We will cross that bridge when we get to it. That being said, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? Ms. Healy, did you get, did I get your vote? Was it a aye? I'm sorry, yes, and Jamie, you as well? That is a five zero zero in favor of the motion. Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Thank you very much.
Next number on the agenda is number four, Kerner's Car Care is the applicant. This is a review for acceptance and consideration of a final approval for a site plan for a change of use. From a limited automotive service, oil changes and car wash facility to a full automobile service and repair facility. In addition to the existing car wash use. The parcel is located at three eighty-sixth Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial, elderly housing, overlay, and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map four D dash three, lot twenty-eight, case planning board number twenty twenty-one forty-five. Casey, it's my understanding that we have a request for a continuance for this item?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, the the request was for uh, the January fourth. Planning board meeting.
To push to the January fourth?
Yep.
Board members, if you have that in your packet, if you have a chance to read it, I'll be willing to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to uh, to extend. To extend the uh, period of consideration until January the fifth, was it?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Yes.
Uh, as requested by the applicant in accordance with his memo of the other day.
Motion made by Mr. Disco. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Seconded by Jamie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all abstaining, five zero zero to. Continue. Number five on the agendo, agenda, Merco Incorporated is the applicant. This is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a sixty-eight-hundred square foot construction materials warehouse and storage building. The parcel is located at seventeen Smith Road in the I-one industrial and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map three D dash two, lot zero zero nine dash two, case planning board number two twenty-one forty-six. Casey, do you have anything to say on this before we speak to the applicant?
I'll let the applicant make their presentation. I just wanted to uh, point out that in our memo, uh, staff has recommended. Uh, continuance of acceptance of this application. Since the time of this memo getting written, we did receive um, a waiver of request for the missing item, which was the building red rings. Uh, so if the board um, would like to entertain that waiver, they would be able to accept this application as complete. Uh, and we also received um, peer review since the time of this memo getting written as well.
Thank you, Casey. Sir, please, if you can introduce yourself and then tell us what you have.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Nathan Chamberlain, Fieldstone Land Consultants. We're here for uh LW Supply. It's on seventeen Smith Road, which is adjacent to, situated between. The Everett Turnpike and Daniel Webster Highway. Uh, it's a little loop road. The bank is in the middle of this island there. This is an existing um, building supply, also known as Merrimack Building Supply. They do um, all drywall, roofing materials, studs. Stuff like that, so, you know, business is good. They've run out of room in their building for dry storage. They do have uh, storage out in the yard as well. It's exposed to the elements, and so what they're here to ask for is uh, to add an additional building, a shed, if you will. At the back of the property to house additional items that need to stay out of the weather. Having existing conditions planned, the existing building is approximately twenty-two thousand square feet. It's in the uh, I-one zone and uh, it's been functional for several years. It's got some uh, existing landscaping along the front. There's an existing infiltration basin in the front. This is the loading area. Then they have a storage, a gravel storage area out here. That will be paved, we're proposing to pave in the, as part of this project. The site plan, this is the building they're proposing over here, is tucked into the hillside. It's sixty-eight-hundred square feet, as was mentioned. Uh, it is gonna be open on the front. It's kinda like what you'd see in a lumberyard, something to that effect. Uh, basically a lean-to, storage on, you know. It's um, has three sides and an open in the front. And it is gonna be tucked into the hillside, as I mentioned. This existing gravel area will be paved and. There will be more, there's storage racks there now and they'll, those will just be replaced with these new storage racks that are longer. The existing site will still function as it currently does with the loading area here. It's got uh, at-grade loading docks and, you know, recessed full loading docks. It's got some existing parking out front, the main entrance. There's also entrance on the north side that trucks can loop around. I'm not sure if like a tractor trailer truck can make that turn, but. Trucks do come around and back into these loading docks, or they come in the main driveway and back up into there. And that, that whole. Process will still be maintained in the, in the post-development. Uh, we are proposing a parking area here for additional parking. Um, the, the existing, I think there's. Nine spaces existing there, but um, the total parking space is proposed is forty and what's required is twenty-six. Uh, we did get the staff memo and because we're increasing the parking, we do need one additional um. ADA space to meet that ADA requirement, so we'd have to. Probably re-stripe this front section over here to add another ADA space, so that'll probably bring us down to twenty-five once we do that. Uh, as far as, there's really no utility to speak of. Uh, they will, you know, they'll bring power from the existing building over to the, the proposed building. Only thing that's gonna be over there is lighting. Interior and exterior. There's gonna be no water or sewer going to the new building. It's just strictly. There's going to be no water or sewer going into the new building. It's just strictly dry storage. As far as stormwater, you know, the site is currently gravel, and there's not a lot, there's not a big difference between gravel, you know, the curb number for runoff from gravel to pavement, so not, not extensive drainage works proposed. We do have, there's a, there's a little island here with a head wall in it, and then a catch basin on the corner, and then another head wall here to route the runoff from around this building and a, and a grass whale down to this head wall, and then it gets over to this little infiltration area, and then into the existing larger infiltration area. You know, took a look at that infiltration area. It looks to be in good shape and good working order. There's no signs of erosion from the current, the current runoff that's going there. It looks like there's a bunch of catch basins along the side of the building and the roof, the roof sheets down off the roof. There's not like a internal collection system. It just comes off the roof like a, it's a pitched roof. And into this series of catch basins and into this existing infiltration basin. Looking at it, there's like, there's like no signs of erosion, so it seems to be working well now. I know the peer review had some comments about the drainage design, so we're going to have to adjust a little bit, but I think, you know, we have the space to do it and address all their comments and make it all work fine. And we are proposing, there is, we did include a lighting. This is the site plan, the plans mixed up here. So site lighting, we are proposing two pole lights, twenty-foot mounting height, shielded and downcast. And then there's a couple of building mounted lights as well that are, again, shielded and downcast. And those are the lighting numbers. Basically just the light in proposed parking area. This site is gated, and those gates, I assume, close at night, so people can't come in there and take stuff. So, you know, this is, the hours of operation will be the same as what's currently occurring on site. So I mean, I imagine this will be gated at night, and people won't be getting in here, and the lights will be on the same hours of operation. I will confirm that. And then landscaping, again, not a lot of landscaping. There's mature landscaping out front. They've got, you know, four mature maple trees. I'm not sure what these shrubs are. The survey crew didn't identify what these shrubs are. They look to be some kind of evergreen shrub. I'm sorry, not evergreen, this is a shrub. And then there's a mature row of evergreens here that do a good job of shielding. It's sixteen to twenty feet high. There's still some space in between them, and those will fill in even more over time to completely shield this proposed parking area and this building. So we're not augmenting the landscaping a whole lot. We just have some shrubs in this island. Proposed bayberries that are on the town's list for acceptable species. They are salt tolerant. I know the, the peer review had some comments on the landscaping, which we can certainly look to address as well. I think that's pretty much all I got for this. It's, you know, a pretty, pretty small change. As I mentioned, this building is going to be built into the hillside, so most of the back's going to be buried. And then you'll see the front and a little bit of the sides. We are asking for a waiver from providing building renderings. You know, this is, again, it's a, it's a cold short shed, not really sure how we can make that meet all the requirements in your, in the regulations for buildings. It is set back on the lot. It is screened with those evergreens. So we're asking for a waiver to, for the, the building renderings that are required in the site plan application.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure.
Casey, do you have a copy of any comments? I'm not seeing them in my packet. You said you got the peer review?
Yeah, we got the peer review after this memo was released to the board.
Okay, are there any, just a quick little, are there any out of the ordinary comments in there?
Nope.
The pretty standard boilerplate ones we usually give. Okay. Ms. Healy, please, go ahead.
The problem I have with the plate is that except for the couple of feet of the open shed being on lot three D dash two dash, what is it, nine? Everything else, the drainage and everything else, is happening over on three D dash two dash eight, but yet there's no mention of that. And I did verify that on the GIS map, and it still labels it as three D two dash eight. So, like I said, all the drainage and everything that's happening in that lower lot, that's not the lot that's on the plate.
Could you repeat that? I didn't have the map in front. I mean, I didn't expect the question.
So the present existing building and part of the shed that they're talking about building, a couple of feet, are on the lot that is three D dash two dash nine. The rest of it, of that shed and the shelving or whatever the, the storage area they're putting in, plus the parking, plus the drainage, that all happens over on three D dash two dash eight.
Barbara, the lots were merged?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Are they, they're not that way on the GIS map?
Yeah, it's because it was done incredibly recently, and the GIS, yeah, this was just like a month and a year ago. So, and the GIS mapping only gets updated once a year.
Now you can understand my confusion, why I was sitting there with maps all over the place, trying to figure out where we were working.
I could see the confusion.
Okay, is three D, okay, straighten me out here. Three D dash two dash nine.
Three D is what they're saying, Nelson, is that three D two, three D two dash nine dash two was merged with three D two dash eight. So on your current plans that we're looking at, that's why it took me some time to see it as well, it does not show a three D dash two dash eight, because it was merged with nine.
Right, so it's merged, and now it's three point something acres, three point one four three.
Yeah. So what Barb, what Ms. Healy is saying is that it does show on the GIS map.
Yeah.
But it's because they had just gone through a lot line merger.
And we had no notes in our packet that said that that had happened.
Okay, and now the three D, what was three D two dash nine, that's the one with the big barn and the
Correct. That's the whole, yeah, that's the whole plot.
I didn't realize those were both one lot, and I was wondering why it was even shown on here. So that explains that to me. Okay, thank you.
Right, we started out with, originally it was three lots, and now we're down to two.
Yes.
One thing I did not mention is they did receive a variance to have this building in that, the forty-foot setback, the rear setback.
Then you received that variance as far as I can see, yeah, so.
And it's noted on the plan, to that effect.
Nathan, how will the hill be impacted? Are you gonna, is it going to be level going into the structure?
No, so the, the back wall is retaining wall. So it's going to, you know, it's going to be built in the wall, the foundation will be built into the hillside.
Okay.
So there'll be a change of grade from where the hill ties into the back of the building to the finished floor of the building, and that'll be a retaining wall.
Got it.
Yeah. So we show a little bit, you know, we show the grading, we call out a spot elevation here in this upper corner. This will be the high side. And it slopes along the back of the building and around the corner here, so this, you know, it's going to be more buildings sticking up on this end than there is on that end. I think it's like six feet difference. But that, the north end, the north, I guess west corner is going to be pretty much totally buried.
Are these two lots used as one site? Or, I'm now confused about this, this second lot, or this lot three D two dash nine.
I don't believe so. I think they're separate entities.
It's a separate bill, yeah, separate uses and everything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what are we, are we approving something here? Are we approving a lot line?
No, no, no. We're, we're working on three D two nine dash two.
Okay. And three D two dash nine is shown for information purposes?
Correct.
Only, okay.
I think when this project started out several years ago, because this is a very old number, seven eighty-seven, so this was, you know, we originally worked on this several years ago. This, the existing condition was done for the, all three lots. And now we're just working, we've consolidated two of them, and now we're just working on the Merrimack Building Supply portion of it.
Yeah, but it's one ownership, yeah?
Uh, that I don't, I don't know. I'd have to check the notes.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Board members, the first thing we have to do, first of all, is to accept it as complete, if we all agree that it is in fact complete.
Yeah.
And as far as our memo states, now that we do in fact have a writ, a written waiver request, staff, if I'm correct, is fine with its completeness. Okay, thank you, Casey. That being said, board members, do I hear a motion for its completeness? Ms. Healy?
Yes, motion to find the application complete.
Motion made by Ms. Healy, do I hear a second?
A second.
Seconded by Jamie. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero to mark as complete. Now, board members, any other questions? Regarding the waiver, regarding anything else?
Yeah, I would make a motion to waiver the requirement for rendering of the building. Given where it's located on the site, you can't see it from the road, given it's built into the bank, and from the simplistic design that was described, I don't, I'd be willing to waiver that requirement.
And do you have a hardship or?
Oh, because, yeah, I guess it would make too much of a hardship to, to do that.
Got it. Motion made by Mr. Disco to accept the waiver. Did I hear a second from Ms. Healy? All in favor of accepting the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero in favor of the waiver request. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Chamberlain regarding the rest of the project?
We'll just give him an opportu, we'll just postpone it and give him an opportunity to clean up the review comments? Is that what's needed here?
I was going to ask staff about that. If they're all, Casey, if they're all boilerplates, is staff comfortable with us approving this, or do they still want us to continue it?
Yes, let me take a quick moment to confirm that one of the written conditions is meeting the, yep, here we go, so recommended condition number four is meeting comments from the town review consultant, Fosson O'Neil. And like you said, the, the comments are standard enough that they can
The standard boilerplate comments we usually get.
Yeah, okay.
Nelson, if you feel, if you feel like we need to continue, that is, that's obviously your prerogative if you want to make a motion?
We do need, just for, just for the notes that the, it was open up for public comment.
Correct. I'll now open the public session at eight twenty-four. If any members of the public wish to step forward and comment on this project, please do so. Seeing nobody, I'd like to close the public session at eight twenty-four. Now, do we have any more?
As far as the continuing, I mean, it's not really going to change your plan at all. You know, we really, the purpose will be not to have to come back if that's, if that's possible.
No, that's fine. I was just, um, giving them an option, because usually I do like to see the comments, but if she says, I trust in staff that they are mostly boilerplate comments.
Yeah.
And if everybody else does as well, and they feel comfortable enough.
In that case, I would make a motion to approve the plan, subject to a review and incorporation of the comments from our consulting engineers.
Motion made by Mr. Disco, do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Healy. All in favor to grant conditional final approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero to approve. Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Next on the agenda is item six, discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Casey, I do believe we have two requests for extensions?
Yes, that's correct. We have one extension request for a lot line adjustment that was conditionally approved by the board back in June. This is the lot line adjustment at twelve and fourteen Dodier Court. They are requesting a one-year extension. The board does typically do a six-month extension. Staff has no problem with the one-year. The board can require the applicant to come back with a status report if they're concerned.
What was that, Mr. Disco?
I asked, I didn't quite hear what she said about what kind of a report do we need?
If you, just because they're asking for a one-year extension, rather than a typical six-month, if the board wishes to, you can require the applicant to come back to the board for an informal status report.
Yeah.
If the board's concerned about a lengthy extension.
What's their excuse? That was, looked like a simple thing.
Yeah, yeah, it initially was a simple thing. On the, one of the properties founds an accroachment on the opposite side from another neighbor, so they either need to form some kind of easement or propose a new lot line adjustment, so they're, they're sorting that out right now.
Okay.
It's just another reason to know where your property is.
What?
When you buy a house, get it surveyed immediately, always.
You'd think, yeah.
That's, I've done it twice now. I'm on my second house. The first thing I do is get it surveyed.
Yeah.
Mainly because of what I experienced on this board. We also have another one for fifty-seven fifty-nine Daniel Webster Highway, and that one is just a six-month request. I don't see, Casey, do they see what the reasoning was for this? I'm not seeing it on this email.
Yeah, sure. So for the six-month extension request for the project at fifty-seven fifty-nine DW Highway, that is just state permitting that they're waiting on.
Oh, so they're just, the state's moving slower than they would like them to.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Is there a lot, was there a lot line adjustment there? Where was that, fifty-nine?
At fifty-seven fifty-nine DW Highway, it was not a lot line adjustment. It was a site plan that the board conditionally approved in June. That, just to jog your memory, that was for a manufacturing building and an addition onto an existing warehouse.
Help me out, where is that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's down there towards Nashville.
Yeah, I know.
Fifty-seven fifty-nine, that's, that's, is that the, is that the, the old Nashville Corp building? Am I? I think so. Old Nashville Corp down by, uh, everyday owners.
Yeah. Well, they're waiting on the state, I can understand that. I'll make a motion to approve that, that extension.
The fifty-seven fifty-nine?
Yeah.
For six months?
For six months, yeah.
To July sixth?
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Disco, do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Dano. All in favor of the motion to grant the extension to six months to push it out to July sixth? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, five zero zero to grant that extension. Next one we have is the one-year extension. Do I hear a motion on that one?
Can you tell us again where that one is?
This is the one, this is the lot line adjustment, yes. That, now they're just finding issues all over the place.
Okay.
I'm not seeing a date here, Casey, as to when, from December.
December one twenty-two.
Oh, there it is, yeah, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion on this?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it with the condition that Casey suggested, where we have a six-month review of where they are.
Where they're, where they're standing on it.
To their stand, yeah, just so they don't forget us.
Casey, did you get that?
Yeah, with the condition of a status report in six months.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Disco, do I hear a second?
A second.
Seconded by Jamie. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero to grant the second extension.
And just for clarity, that was a one-year extension?
Correct.
Yes, one-year extension with a six-month report.
Thank you.
I do have one other thing here for a maintenance bond. I'm going to have to give this to somebody. Dana, how about I give this to you? Casey, do you want to go over this for us?
Yes.
For the DPW maintenance bond?
Yep. So this is a portion of Old Blood Road that is now ready to be accepted by the, by, by the town, by the town council. So the bond needs to be, the current bond in place needs to be reduced, and then a maintenance bond for two years needs to be established by the board.
Okay. Given that Bob is not here and I'm the only one with this recommended motion, so Dano, do you want to make that motion? That's right there. If you feel comfortable with it, go ahead and make it.
So I'd like to motion to release the sixty thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollar performance bond being held by Old Blood Road Upgrades Project as part of the Richard Prince subdivision as further establish a maintenance bond in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is ten- which is ten percent the original project bond amount for the project to be held for a period of two years after the town council votes to accept the aforementioned improvements as outlined in a memo from David, I'm going to butcher his last name, Tumala, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer dated December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion made by Mr. Dano, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Healy. All in favor of the motion made by Mr. Dano, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, that's five zero zero to grant Dawn her bond. Casey, that's all I'm seeing for uh other actions. Is there anything I missed?
Uh nope, that's all I have for the board.
Okay, on to approval of the minutes for Tuesday, December seventh. Does anybody have any discussion regarding these minutes?
I have a, a comment.
Nelson, please.
It's on page three, but the sentence begins on the bottom of page two having to do with the artificial recharge at wells four and five. The last sentence there in that paragraph says Chairman Best asked how the artificial recharge works. And Mr. Minor explained that they pump water from the river into a retention basin to artificially recharge the aquifer.
Yes.
And it says the soils are very porous near these wells, so the aquifer does not recharge as fast as some other wells. I think that sentence should say the soils are not very porous near these wells and that's why they have to pump in the extra water. So I think there's a word not missing after the word are, between are very porous.
I would agree, Nelson, unless the problem is that the water's getting in there too fast.
That's right, right. Otherwise, I'm, okay, with the minutes, I'm willing to approve the, make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Any other discussion before the motion is made? Nelson, please.
Pardon?
You want to make a motion to
Oh, yes, I thought I'd, I, I would move that we approve the minutes, the draft minutes of Tuesday, December seventh with the suggested change that I made for on page three.
Motion made by Mr. Disco, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dano. All in favor of approving these minutes as written with the detail changed by Mr. Disco, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining.
Aye.
That is three zero two to approve the minutes.
Who, who abstained? Oh.
Ms. Healy and Jamie did not. They abstain.
Oh, they abstain, yeah.
With the minutes being done, do we hear a motion to adjourn? So moved by Ms. Healy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Disco. All in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstaining, five zero zero in favor of adjournment. Members, please remember to turn off your microphones. Thank you very much.